Can I ask everyone, please, your eyes for what?
For what allegiance?
For the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call order. The motion is present. You have some presentations to make, employees' years of service recognition. First one is Rachel Pericoff with ten years of service. Rachel.
Hey, nice.
And then we have Nancy Tater with ten years of service. Nancy. And then we have Kathleen X with fifteen years. Congratulations.
We can have chairs.
There's some seats up front.
Item five.
Make a motion to approve item number five on our agenda. Second.
Motion by Christian Arnold, second by Christian Warren, to approve item five on the agenda. To approve minutes of the June twenty-second meeting. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Item six.
I'll make a motion to approve item number six as listed on our agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold, to approve item six on the agenda. Motion to approve to ratify the cashless persons electronic payments. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried.
Make a motion to approve item number seven as listed on our agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold, to approve item seven on the agenda to approve the following summary request, no payments for some of those. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item eight.
Make a motion to approve item number eight as listed on our agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold, to approve item eight on the agenda to announce and ratify the transfer of Jacqueline Fancher from full-time union position of conference officer to full-time union position of court liaison conference officer. Questions or comments?
Is that a new position, or what is that?
No, it's an existing position.
It is, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number nine as listed on our agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold, to approve item nine on the agenda to announce appoint of George Geyser of Camp Hill to Susquehanna County Task Force effective July fourteenth. Questions or comments?
I'd like to know, what is that? Can you explain what that task force is? What he's going to be doing?
It's the drug task force, and that's all I can alleviate at this time.
You can't give more information on it?
No, because they're all undercover people.
Undercover? Even though his name is really released, he's undercover guy?
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number ten as listed on our agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold, to announce the transfer of Sandra Henry from the full-time union position of first deputy clerk of courts to full-time union position of second deputy treasurer at ten sixty per hour, per the recommendation of Jason Miller. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number eleven as listed on our agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold, to approve item eleven
on the agenda, approve the hiring and set of crew, Montrose to full-time union position of field trade and training. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Item twelve.
Make a motion to approve item number twelve as listed on our agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold, to approve item twelve on the agenda to ratify and announce the hiring of Damian Bishop of Bennington to the open part-time position of corrections officer. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so carried.
Make a motion to approve item number thirteen as listed on our agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold, to approve item thirteen on the agenda to approve the transfer of Pamela Larrabee from Kingsley from part-time correction officer to the full-time corrections officer. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number fourteen as listed on our agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold, to approve item fourteen on the agenda to accept with regret the resignation of Ariel Hillard at the jail effective July fifteen. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item fifteen.
Make a motion to approve item number fifteen as listed on our agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold, to approve item fifteen on the agenda to accept with regret the resignation of Liza Holly from the jail. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Item sixteen.
Make a motion to approve item number sixteen on the agenda with the exception of and except to ratify the termination of. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold, to approve item sixteen on the agenda to ratify the termination of Emily Wilson in jail. Questions or comments?
You have like three people here, looks like they're all women, and it means they're what, correction officers? It doesn't say here. What are they?
I believe the one was, yeah, I believe they're all corrections officers.
Why don't you include that, so we know exactly what they are? That would be helpful, I think. You've got three of them corrections officers, two resigned, and one is terminated in the past two weeks. So what do you have now, three openings?
Well, most of these positions were temporary positions.
So you don't have any openings for the?
No, we had one full-time opening, and that was replaced.
Okay, so right now there's no openings for the women? Because they just do women, the women COs?
No.
They can also work for the men?
They work, can work both sides.
They do? Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item seventeen.
Make a motion to approve item number seventeen as listed on our agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold, to approve item seventeen to ratify the appointment by Treasurer Benedict, the hiring of Teresa McNamara, sorry, Treasurer Miller, I'm sorry. She's been with us for five years. Treasurer Miller, the hiring of Teresa McNamara from Friendsville for temporary part-time do permits. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number eighteen as listed on our agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold, to approve item eighteen to ratify the appointment by Treasurer Miller, item of Lisa McVeigh, appalled stood for the temporary part-time do permits. Questions or comments?
Can you explain, what is DOE? Is that Penta, or what is that?
It's Antlers Deer.
Antlers Deer.
Oh, for deer, oh, I see.
Oh, for doe.
For doe.
Those of us who are not hunters have no concept of that.
But this is only temporary, then, these jobs?
All in favor?
Make a motion to approve item number nineteen as listed on our agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold, to approve item nineteen on the agenda to ratify the appointment by Jason Miller, the hiring of Sarah Smith of Windsor, again for the part-time do permits. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item twenty.
Make a motion to approve item number twenty as listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold, to approve item twenty to ratify the appointment by Treasurer Jason Miller, the hiring of Sharon Stockholm, a Montrose for the temporary do permits. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number twenty-one as listed on our agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold, to approve item twenty-one on the agenda, sign the purchase of service agreements between Susquehanna County Services for Children and Youth and George Shun, the Republic Preventative Aftercare, on Grove City. Questions or comments?
Have you been with this group already, or is this a new group? Because I don't recall that name, but, you've had them?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item twenty-two.
Make a motion to approve item number twenty-two as listed on our agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold, to approve item twenty-two on the agenda to sign the purchase of service agreement between Susquehanna County Services for Children and Youth and EIAAB Human Services Incorporated in Tencan. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried.
Make a motion to approve item number twenty-three as listed on our agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold, to sign the purchase service agreement between Susquehanna County Services for Children and Youth and the Youth Services Agency for PA Gym Thorax. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Item twenty-four.
Make a motion to approve item number twenty-four as listed on our agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold, to approve item twenty-four on the agenda, sign the purchase of service agreement between Susquehanna County Services for Children and Youth and Institute for Human Resources Services Incorporated in Kingsley. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so carried. Item twenty-five.
Make a motion to approve item number twenty-five as listed on our agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold, to approve item twenty-five on the agenda to ratify the filing collective bargaining agreements between the county of Susquehanna and TMCH's Local Two Twenty-Nine, as so stated. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so carried. Item twenty-six.
Make a motion to approve item number twenty-six as listed on our agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold, to approve item twenty-six on the agenda to authorize commissioners to sign the municipal waste mining grant agreement under section nine oh one, act one oh one, between PA Department of Environmental Protection and Susquehanna County.
What does that include?
I'll explain that to you.
This was the, I'm trying to think, this was the solid waste plan that we have done, and advertising, and all of the ads and everything, we're getting reimbursed for, for our solid waste plan. It needs to be updated every so often. Solid waste plan we have here in Montrose? In the county?
Yeah, every county has to have one.
So this has nothing to do with the?
No.
Oh, you already finished my sentence, that's cool.
So what is the solid?
Thank you.
So what is the solid waste, Alan? Where is it coming from? When you say it's for the county, what's solid?
It's the solid waste that's generated in this county, where it goes to?
I know, but it's generated from where?
Your house.
Huh? What?
Do you have recycling pickup?
Yeah, so you're talking about that?
So the recycling pickup and the solid waste, wherever it goes to, if it has to go to the landfill or wherever it goes, we have a solid waste plan that designates where it goes, how many pounds go, how many pounds leave the county, where it goes to.
And you've had this now for years?
Oh, absolutely.
Can we get a copy of that solid waste plan?
Can we request a copy?
Request a copy of that, and see where it goes, what you're talking about, so it's just recycling, and whatever comes out of the courthouse, or courthouse buildings?
The whole county.
The whole county. Your house, if you put garbage out, and recycling, and all of that, everything.
Is it going to any new places, or just the old places it's been?
Just the old places.
Do you know what landfills you're using at this point?
I couldn't tell you anything. I know several that we're using, there's Taylor and Keystone.
Keystone.
I know recycling was our facility, but there's also recycling going to Scranton, and also into Appalachian.
Appalachian too?
Is that a county?
Appalachian, I think, is New York, what is that?
Yeah.
New York.
Isn't that like, what, the county?
Any other questions?
I'm curious as to the expense of it, for the revision, what's involved in the revision that would make it, and the updating that would make it thirty thousand dollars?
We have to hire a consultant, and they have to have the degrees and certifications to create the plan, and that's what you're paying for. And they have to do the research and compile all the information, put the plan together, hold the meetings, and everything else.
So you're just getting that underway now, is what it looks like?
No, this is done, we're just filing to get reimbursement for it.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Item twenty-seven.
Make a motion to approve item number twenty-seven as listed on our agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold, to approve item twenty-seven on the agenda, and on the following appointments to the Susquehanna County Agricultural Land Conservation Board as follows, as listed. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. With this done, we will take a move to public comment.
Too close, Derek. My name is Felicia Murray. I live in New Moford Borough. I have a signed petition from Susquehanna about the toxic waste incinerator, and we, the undersigned, asked the county commissioners of Susquehanna County to act immediately to protect the health and air quality of county residents by drafting and passing a legally defensible air ordinance. The county, we request the county to be responsible for monitoring, monitoring, and enforcing in light of increasing industry interest in our county, like the industrial incinerator Tyler Corners plans to build in New Moford. So I want to present my petition from Susquehanna.
All right, thank you.
I'll read it.
I'll sign it.
Any other?
I have two hundred and seventy-one signatures to add to her petition.
Can we add some more?
Yeah, it'll be signed.
Any other public comment?
Well, what I request on that petition?
It'll be reviewed.
And how long will the review take, and what's the process on your end?
Our process on our end is to look at our legal obligations and what we can do. We'll review it with planning and the solicitor and go from there.
And how does the public know that we've gotten the county?
Move and respond at the next meeting.
At the next meeting? Sure. All right, thank you.
I have fifty more, I just started yesterday. And there will be more.
Any other public comment?
I'll let it go. Are there, okay, my name is Ruth Ralston, I'm from the Gibson area, Ruth Ralston. Are there any proposals slash permits pertaining to Tyler Cornus Elsie on that property?
No.
At this point? Okay, and it's not, when, how would we be notified if that ever happens?
Well, if, and I guess Mary Ann had the last conversation with them, so why don't you tell them what they told you?
I had a conversation on June twenty-seventh, after I wrote on their website, as I believe Vera did, and probably everybody else in this room. They said that they've had no pre-application meetings with DEP, they only had a meeting asking questions, and they have to fill out a questionnaire. They have committed to the property, and I think it's more than an option now, I think that they have a deposit or escrow on the property. Let me see, so they have not, they said they're just in the stages of looking into putting an incinerator, that there are no plans. This was an investor that I spoke to, and?
Can you name the investor?
I think it was in one of the emails that went around, Tom Donato.
Resides where?
I don't know where he resides, I'm sorry.
Anybody else besides Tom you talked to?
No, yesterday, I wrote another message on their website, and he got back to me on Monday, said he would call me back yesterday, and he said that I had very specific questions, as did many people in Susquehanna County, and they would be releasing a press release in a couple of days to get back to everyone at the same time. So I'm expecting for the end of the week, that will be coming out, and that's all I have.
Mary Ann, do you know how, would it be in the newspaper, or?
I don't know, I'm sorry.
I've mentioned that I've gone door to door, and there's nobody that's for this, everybody's against it.
Yeah.
Gary Steever, Gibson Township. Given the history of municipal waste incinerators in the United States, I think it can be factually proven that they have no environmental, they have a huge environmental impact, it's negative. Any economic benefits that would be purported to arrive from such an operation would be far outweighed by the degradation of the air and water quality in this county, which is beyond precious. I think that this is, any economic value is completely suborned to the devastating impact of the environment, and I would sincerely hope that you take that as your first and foremost regulation when you consider their application. This, the history of this is negative, there is no, nowhere, where this, you can go to Japan, you can go to the western states, you can go to the east coast, you can go to Norway, Finland, Europe, that everywhere that this has been proposed, and/or accepted, and put into use, it has had a devastating impact. It would benefit Susquehanna County in no way, shape, manner, or form. Thank you.
And I'm Hartford Township, and I think that our precious economy that's based on rural agriculture, both dairying and crops, and as well as our tourist industry, which we have expanded, we have a mountain nearby, ski resorts, and we have a lot of, that are breakfasts and?
Camps.
And camps, yes.
Expensive camps.
And I feel very strongly that this air is a precious commodity that we cannot replace. Having grown up in Manhattan and New Jersey, I can tell you that's the truth. But I really feel very strongly, when I read the guide for the commissioners, that said you care about our health and welfare, it's actually printed in there as a first priority, that this is certainly connected to that. I will add that in China, a very repressive, what the authoritarian government, for anyone to stick their head up is amazing. Well, within a five and a half kilometer area, the people were so irate at the proposed incineration plant that was going there, and the air quality there is often very bad, that they actually turned over police cars and things. That's unheard of in China for human rights. So if, we are not like China, thank goodness we have a voice, and the voice is here of saying that that incinerator is not a welcome neighbor. Thank you.
Justin, go back.
My name is Bob Kelly, and we're probably three quarters of a mile from the proposed site, and if I intend that if the incinerator is built, I wouldn't intend to stay there and live there. I would be fearful for my health. And I just want to, you know, let you people know that you should protect yourselves foremost.
Appreciate you. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm Mark Oakley from the Moford Township. I'm just saying that obviously these meetings have a lot more interest right now, so I think the meeting should be at a more convenient time, they move the commissioner meeting, I know the township, later in the afternoon, planning commission later in the afternoon, so I was wondering if there's any chance?
Well, unfortunately, our meetings are set by the county code, which is set by legislation in Harrisburg. That's, you know, that's one thing I said when I first ran, is?
Could there be a special meeting called in future?
We cannot have, we cannot have an official commissioners meeting outside business level.
So then you can have a special meeting, then, what would you call a special meeting?
Well, we can't have anything that would conduct any business.
So then have a meeting with no business, just to hear the people's voice, like a town hall meeting?
We could do that.
Could you do that? And it would be after hours, so other people can come who work, full-time or part-time?
Any other comment?
My name is Cindy Guanata, and I live in the Gibson Borough, and I just want to say that I have enjoyed living up here in a very pristine area. I'm from California, from Los Angeles originally, and aware of what hazardous air does to people and their health. With the concerns with this incinerator, and what it will do to the area, devastating our water and our land, but it's also going to harm all of our farms, our, the chickens, the eggs, the meat, anything, the dairies, that's, that's our way of life for decades up here, these folks have been living. That would be completely devastated. I can't see why anything like this would be of any, any use up here at all, you'd be taken, and if you were to move out, you couldn't get anything for your property. I mean, if you were, this is coming in, and you're going to leave, how do you sell your home? You know, you're talking about the welfare of your children, the future, for your kids, everybody will have to be forced to move out, and how many people would be able to, to be stuck here, to die here? So please consider that, please. Thank you.
I just want to answer that, the one I gave you from Susquehanna, if you use that part of the petition?
Yes.
Yes, if you can write Susquehanna, because the requests are, we had to change a little bit of it last night, but that's the request that we are asking of the commissioners to instate. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ruth Ralston, again, I'm from the Gibson area, and I think you could hear from the majority that it's going to affect a lot of people in a negative way, so it's like, the majority that comes in are going to suffer, and it's going to impact the environment, the population, the animals, and everybody, including us. So we're asking you, like, how are you going to help us? And I know you're working very hard just to hold, we appreciate what you're doing, and we know, I'd also like to know, Mary Ann, how are you going to assist him, because, you know, he's, you're going to be taking over again to assist him, or whatever, and we want to know what you're going to do to help us, and how's this all going to work out?
Well, we're going to do everything we can. First of all, our comprehensive plan that we has, that we do have, states right in there that, you know, we want environmentally friendly businesses that are here. So, you know, that's already part of the plan that we have. Yes, we want business growth, we want economic development, but we also, part of the plan, you know, the second priority, was that, you know, that it's environmentally friendly. So we will continue to look at all the avenues we can. First of all, find out what is actually going on, because as Mary Ann has said, we don't have anything from them, or even anything as far as that this is exactly what we're going to do. So as I tried to get information, and couldn't get any information, then I had Mary Ann work on sending emails to try and get information, and luckily, you know, I don't know if that threw them off guard, because they didn't know her name, they didn't talk to her, but then again, at the second phone conversation, they were reluctant, I would say, to give her any information. So we will continue to research, find out what's going on, look at all the avenues to see what we can do.
Right, and I was also saying, since we're sitting here in a world together, and we're in one regard that we don't want this, what can we do, or how can we help you to prevent this from ever happening again, so our children's children don't have to have the same fight? And I think this is a very specific issue, because I know we're fighting, you know, we're not told, you know, we don't want this as it is, as a group, but we also don't want to have this fight again, we don't want our children's children to have this fight. So we're asking you, what could you do for the future to help us, not to have to go through the same situation? That's what we're looking at.
Well, you know, and to try and answer that, part of the issue with this is, is as many of the rules that are there to try and help us, there's many rules there that hinder us at the same time. So, and anything that you do, you know, when you start looking at this, you have to be careful that although you're trying to take care of one issue, that it doesn't look that you're trying to discriminate against that industry, because that's illegal. So I didn't write the laws, I didn't write the rules. You know, I may not agree with them all, but they're there, and we have to work through them. You know, I'll give you the perfect example of, and some of you that have been here for quite a while, remember the issue that came up with the Lynn Cott landfill. Lynn Cott landfill, of course, is contaminated, and we've been working on that for, I don't even know how many years now, but more than we'd like to talk about. But the waste company that had that landfill requested and permitted to take and get that landfill expanded. So the commissioners at the time, of course, thought they were doing the best thing they could, jumped on the bandwagon, hired an attorney, spent over three hundred thousand dollars trying to fight it, and lost. Now, the only thing that stopped that from coming was the groups like Rescue and the public that did the outcry to DEP and EPA, that ended up finally stopping that expansion of that landfill.
Well, I guess I think that's what we're asking, like, what can we do right now to assist you, because we're all working together, and, you know, if you could give us any good options or ideas, something we could take home with us, that can start working out right away.
Well, part of the issues that we have is trying to gain the facts, is, you know, part of the issue that we have is people don't come to us and tell us exactly what's going on. Businesses don't come, all those businesses came beginning April and said, hey, we're looking at your area, there was no other commitment other than, hey, we're just looking, you know, who's who in the area. Once they decided to do something, if they have decided, you know, they're not in contact with us, and even when we try to contact them, as you saw with Mary Ann, you know, the responses we get are less than favorable as to what's actually going on. So alls we can do is watch to see if any permits are filed, see if any plans are submitted to? to planning, check with the supervisors, see if they've had any contact. Because the same thing we tell every person that comes here, is that if you're coming to Susquehanna County, the first thing you need to do is meet with the municipality and have a public meeting and let them know what's going on. Well, most of these companies don't. There was one, three weeks ago, or four weeks ago, I found out was surveying, a company that was surveying up by the, by the welcome center in a big field. And they were talking to homeowners, trying to buy their homes, trying to do all kinds of stuff. We had no idea who they were, they weren't letting anybody know. We kept trying to investigate, finally, and the only way I knew was because one of the homeowners there called me and said, hey, what's going on? I said, I haven't heard of anything. So luckily, that homeowner called me back last week and said they've decided there's too much of a flood plan, they're leaving, they're not going to do anything. And we've had another one, which was Gulf Oil, that was three years ago that I found out about, was on Route 7. They were looking to put an LNG plant in. The only way we found out about that was by the property owners saying, hey, you know, we just got a big bag of money, they took options on the land, they're giving us money each month for our house and everything, but as far as we know, and I've checked with the property owners, nothing's happened, and they haven't bought the houses, and their options run out at the end of this year. So the big thing for us is that if people get factual information.
Right.
To get that to us, because there's so much non-factual information right now, it's hard to sift through, and you end up chasing one end to try and figure out what's going on, and then something slides through on the other side. So if we can get factual information, we keep tracking, that's the information. Now, we do know at this point, and I did check again first thing this morning, that land is not sold in the MLS.
So it's not closed? Hasn't closed yet?
It's not closed, it's only pending.
So it's only pending in contract?
In contract.
And how many parcels, and are all the parcels not closed? There's more than one?
All the parcels are not closed, and I think there's like four, four parcels.
Maybe four, or four or five parcels?
Right, so it doesn't show closed. Now, I, you know, knowing a little bit about real estate, I can't imagine this company is just going to come buy the land without having contingencies, saying, I'm not going to spend a million dollars or two million dollars on land if I can't get my permits, get my sewer system, get my stormwater system. Because that's one of the issues when we looked at that land over there. The only side that had any potential value that we saw was on Mr. Oakley's side, where his blueberry farm is, because that's the only side that has a sewer system. Unfortunately, we found out sewer system's maxed out, they can't do anything with it, and the discharge from the sewer system goes into the creek that goes down to Oliver Road, and that's already maxed out, it can't handle any more storm runoff or sewage. So basically, it looked like undeveloped land to us on that side, even though, you know, they're still trying to put some shops in over there. The other side, the problem we saw with the other side, when, and actually, the owner of that property came and asked the county if we'd be interested in buying it, we said, it's got no value to it, there's no place to put a sewer system in, because there's no place for discharge. You've got to have a creek or someplace to run the discharge from the sewer.
Yeah, but can't you ship it out by trucks?
And the same with the storm runoff. And the storm runoff has become a bigger issue with DEP now than ever before.
Right.
Because, you know, so just picture the side of that mountain. You blacktopped the whole side of that mountain, you get an inch of rain, what's going to happen? You know, that's a huge issue.
So we're going to go in a creek?
Well, there's no creek there.
Well.
It'll go out on 81.
81, yeah, okay.
There's no creek on that side of the road. No. You'd have to go over the mountain to Creek Road. And if you go to Creek Road, that creek is so small, you couldn't send that much water there either.
Right.
So, you know, that's why we think, all right, nothing's ever going to happen there, that's kind of a dead site, nothing's going to happen. So, but again, like I said, the issues we have is, you know, people don't come to us and disclose what they're trying to do, or even when they come.
Right.
You know, we, we have heard some good things, like we've read on Facebook that Summit Inn is opening up today.
That is good.
You know, they're reopening, going to have, you know, fresh fish and fresh buffet on Friday night.
That's where you should have our next meeting, okay.
And then, well, let me finish, and then.
And it's a local program.
And then, I've also heard through the grapevine, I can't confirm it, it's only a rumor at this point, that some company's looking at putting some kind of recreational thing out in Oakland Township. And also that there's a new bakery going in in Forest City, I haven't been able to confirm that.
Nice, we'll have to have some cake from there.
So, so that's, that's what we know. This is what we hear, but we only get our information by when permits get filed, or if somebody calls and tells us somebody's snooping around the land.
Okay. Well, I, I think that goes back to my point, that if there's any way we could prevent something harmful, something harmful coming into the area, because we're here now, but we have children, we have children that have children, and we want to preserve the environment for them as well.
Right.
So if we could put together some kind of ordinance or whatever at this point. And the second question I have is with Mr. Brookley. Have you heard from him and how the ordinance is going, and what's the latest on that?
No, that would be, you know, we're not in contact with Mr. Brookley on that.
Okay.
Yeah, question?
Yes, I do. A petition was presented to you, but what I'd like to know is, do you have the authority to put in a clean air ordinance?
Well, that's one thing that we've had some discussion about, the clean air ordinance, depending on what it states, will depend on whether it's something that can be put in. Now, passing an ordinance isn't the issue, but the enforcing of it, monitoring of it, and managing it is a whole different thing. Now, our comprehensive plan that we did, that we're in the process of getting ready to update, our comprehensive plan when we did the surveys, said that nobody wanted countywide ordinances or countywide planning, they wanted all left to the municipalities to handle. So as we start through the next round of the comprehensive plan, we'll see what the township supervisors say in their surveys, and the public says in their surveys, to see what, what the public wants.
Okay, so you're, you're, how long is that going to take? Because now you're saying it's in the comprehensive plan, so do you have to renew the, do you have to redo and update the comprehensive plan before you would consider putting an ordinance in place?
No, not technically we'd have to do that, but if we're following our current comprehensive plan, you know, our current comprehensive plan says that we're not supposed to be doing it at the, at the county level. And actually, the state recommends that we don't do zoning and ordinances at the county level, that they're done at the local municipal level.
Yeah. So in a situation like this, even though they recommend that you don't, when you see that the amount of, of people in the community do not want something like this, is it not your responsibility to protect us, to actually look into putting a clean air ordinance in and putting it in place? Because this has been going on for quite a while now. I know that, you know, some of you were at the original meeting that I went to weeks ago. So I'm wondering, at that point, has anybody, have any of the commissioners looked into the possibility of putting a clean air ordinance in place? Because we were told it was up to the township, so there was a little bit of confusion there. So I'd like to know, do you have, do you have the authority to do it? Are you planning on doing it? And have you looked into it at this point? I would have thought you should have had a conversation with your solicitor at this point.
Well, we have had a conversation with the solicitor, and the solicitor's continuing to review it. The problem with an air ordinance is determining, you know, how strict you want to make it, and what it does affect, and what it doesn't affect. And at the same time, not putting the county in a position that when you try to pass an ordinance, that it doesn't get the county in a major lawsuit for damages as well as for legal fees. So that's one thing that they are looking at.
Do the nearby compressor stations along 81, one in Sutton Road, one that you see from 81, are they also within the New Milford Township?
Yeah, they are.
One on Sutton Road, Sutton Road, I believe, is in New Milford Township.
And the one on 81 is New Milford Township. There's four in New Milford Township, 12 engine stations that are emitting toxic emissions every hour.
And it was just a, there was just a, and how we find out about things, again, is through the permitting process, that went to the, to the planning commission, but we also just, I just saw a permit application that went to DEP for Harrop Township for an IMG station with three gas generators, generated electricity, burning natural gas, and, you know, there'll be more stuff with that.
And that's a power plant, right?
So there's talk of the municipalities, the townships adopting zoning?
Well, there are several that already have, and that's the other issue. You know, in this county, because we've elected the townships and municipalities, that's how they want to do it, there are several municipalities and townships, like Harrop Township, they have their own planning and their own ordinances, and do all of that.
Yeah, but does anybody have air? Does anybody have an air ordinance in any of those zoning that I know of?
Okay, I would have to ask Harrop Township, I don't know, I think they follow the DEP and EPA ordinances.
My name is Donna Benjamin, and I'm going to read my comment, because I'm really bad at on-the-spot stuff. I'm from Halsted Borough and a lifelong resident of Susquehanna County. I can even trace my family tree back to the nine partners that established our area. Today, we are facing challenges as a county, as we try to balance between new economic development and the health and safety of our people. When I first heard the idea of an incinerator being built in New Milford Township, I thought I must have misunderstood, and they had stopped building those years ago. As I did more research and discovered that our county truly was considering establishing an incinerator, I did a bit more research to see perhaps if new technologies had allowed for safe means of burning waste. There have been some considerable jumps in technology since the 1970s, but not enough that these facilities would be considered safe. Incinerators still contribute to air pollution, are not cost efficient, have an unacceptable risk to public health, and bring about economic depression to the areas that they are located. All things that I would hope our commissioners would be against. There have been leaps and bounds in technologies used for incinerators over the past 40 years, but they still cause unwanted pollution. According to the New York Department of Conservation, incinerators emit 14 times more mercury as coal-fired power plants. Modern pollution control devices do not prevent the escape of many hazardous emissions such as ultrafine filters. But I don't simply mean they are contributing to the giant hole in the ozone that is often used as a scare tactic. Rather, they have immediate effects on the surrounding areas. Dioxins are the most lethal persistent organic pollutants, also called POPs. People within a 50-mile radius will be exposed to these POPs through breathing, eating locally grown food, or even by going hunting and fishing, all of which are extremely common in our area. Dairy farms in particular have already struggled here. When companies find out that these farms are located next to an incinerator, they will be losing their buyers, and then how are we supposed to keep the family dairy going for future generations? Then, there are several businesses and restaurants within view that would lose their niche, as people have no desire to sit and eat dinner while looking out the window at such a monstrosity. And can you blame them? These POPs cause neurological damage, cancer, disrupt the reproductive systems of both men and women, birth defects, thyroid damage, heart attacks, respiratory malfunctions, and the list goes on and on. I believe that we have, already have enough of these type of issues in our county. The argument is often used that we need these jobs that the incinerator would be able to provide, but they have actually been proven to not be cost-effective, and jobs can be created through other industries. Taxpayer dollars have been subsidizing construction and operation of incinerators by the billions. In 2011, Harrisburg became one of the largest cities to declare bankruptcy, and it was due to the insane amount of debt they incurred trying to keep the city's incinerator going, even will increasing taxes to help cover the fees. Yet, for a fraction of the cost, they could have instead implemented reuse and remanufacturing programs and created even more jobs than the incinerator offered. These economic downfalls continue into the private sector, where property values are plummeting and are 38% lower than the national average. For me, though, the most important reason is I have four sons that I am raising in this county. I want a future for them. I am very excited that an industrial park may be coming to our county, so that I know my boys can stay here and be able to make a living, but not at the risk of their health. There are countless industrial parks across the state and country that do not include an incinerator and have viable work opportunities. I am tired of our county being treated like a third-world country, where it doesn't matter what happens to its citizens. We need to be able to step up and say that we deserve better. I respectfully ask that the county commissioners do all within their power to help put an end to this absurdity, and put its people first, including writing a clean air ordinance that would require the county to constantly monitor air quality and enforce strict consequences for any and all violations. To further increase economic growth through proven methods, rather than do business in an industry that has been proven disastrous, not only to people's health, but to their pocketbooks as well.
Thank you.
First of all, the environmentally friendly phrase that you used, we all know that this incinerator is not going to be environmentally friendly. That's why we don't want it. My second question to you is that you knew of this in April?
Beginning of April, that's when we started talking about it.
Okay. As far as the public and everyone that I've been talking to, we didn't know about this until way after April. That's why we have formed these groups, that's why we're snowballing it, that's why we're contacting everyone that we know, because we do not want the incinerator. From April, when you found out about it, until when the public found out about it, there is a big gap there. We don't understand why it wasn't given to the public to know this in April. So that's what I want to say.
Well, and actually, it was talked about in April, it was talked about at the planning commissions, talked about at the public economic development meetings, and Burr, who goes and watches all these other meetings, talked about it at the commissioners' meeting.
But I didn't go to the planning commission meeting or the.
But you got the information.
Economic thing in April, so I didn't hear about it in April, and I went here and heard about it. And most people do not go to those two meetings, they're mostly hardly attended by the public. This is, the most attended is the county commissioners' meeting. So we would never find out what's going on at those two meetings.
Most attended county commissioners' meeting on a regular basis is usually six to eight people.
Right.
And I understand it, and I realize the problem with that is because of the timing of the meetings. But again, that's done by legislation.
Yes, but.
So as we do get information, and if it becomes viable information, we start talking about it, and people know what's going on. But there are a lot of people that come through this county that either contact planning, or myself, or one of the commissioners, or the solicitor, and say, hey, you know, what do we have to do to, if we want to start a business in this county? They don't make any commitments to us, and most of those people never even come back.
Now, when, Mary Ann, when you spoke to Tom Donato, did he admit, did you talk on the phone?
Yes.
Okay, did he admit on this recent call that this is going to be an incinerator? Did he say anything about the word incinerator to you?
Nothing at all.
And why not? Did you ask him, are you bringing in an incinerator?
I did the first time around.
Which was when? First time around is what date?
Was June 27.
June 27.
And he said that there was 114 acres, that out 60 to 70 of those acres within industry.
So when you talk to him, and you hear somebody say to you, I'm going to build out 60 to 70 acres and 114, you didn't think to ask, well, what are you going to do with that 60?
No, it's not, it's not that I didn't think to ask.
So then why didn't you ask?
I didn't say I didn't ask.
So then why don't you know what he's going to do with 60, 70 acres when he's talking to you?
The first time around, he said that they were looking into, they did not say that they were going to put an incinerator. They said they were looking into, and they went to DEP, and were going to fill out the questionnaire. They didn't know, they did not know enough about Pennsylvania to be putting an incinerator in, and that's why they had the conversation with. The other 60 to 70 acres was to build out with industry businesses. I asked if it had anything to do with the incinerator, and he said no. He did say that the incinerator that they were looking into, when I did ask about an incinerator, he said that there were two or three in Ohio and two in Texas that were, I guess, could be compared to what they were looking into. East Liverpool, Ohio? I don't know. Two or, two or three in Ohio and two in Texas. And the conversation was very short. Like I said, he called me back on Monday after I wrote on their website one, one more time, and expressed my.
Monday is what date? June what? Or is it July?
July.
July what?
July 11th, maybe?
July 11th, maybe?
Why don't you see if you can email him again and ask him what the names of the plants are in Ohio and Texas, and try and get that.
No, the thing is, you already know, they've already admitted it's an incinerator that they're thinking about. This is not, you know, rocket science. They've already admitted it. So you are prepared. You don't wait for permits, you don't wait for applications, it's too late then. You do something now and put in an air ordinance for the county and encourage all the municipalities to put an air ordinance, so you are prepared. They're giving you notice. You do what you can because it's not only that business, there'll be other businesses coming in that can emit toxins. So you do it now. You don't wait, you don't futz around, you don't tell other people where to go or what to think about. You've been given notice, you know enough. Please do it now.
Any other comments?
Julanne Skinner, Montrose Borough. First of all, I think everyone should take note, look at all the homes for sale just in the borough. So once this incinerator comes in, like has been mentioned, we might have trouble selling our property and be doomed here. So, we are, to quote Donna, "We are treated like a third-world country." I mean, if you look at FERC, we don't count because of the population density. There is no tracking the gathering lines. That's one instance. The other instance, we are already in serious trouble with the air quality with respect to the 44 compressor stations that are here. So why would we want to add more to the public health threat? This health consultation is real. It was done on April 22 of 2016 from Agency on Toxic Substance and Disease Registry. So it's been documented, and we can go to every other compressor station and find it here, because a group of concerned citizens were smart enough and went and got grant money to get these monitors. So we can do something, and you can enforce it as well. And we should, please, we're begging you, to consider the ordinance, and by the fact that they are not forthcoming, it's insulting to you that they do that and treat you like that.
Right.
I agree.
Definitely, they should.
In the interest of full disclosure and for the benefit of those who find it inconvenient to come to these meetings every two weeks, the Matros Independent did feature, talk about this incinerator back in May. So it was out in the public very shortly after you guys learned about it. So it was, it was being hidden. It was front page, big headline. It was not hidden information, it was right out there. If people didn't buy the paper or see the paper, that's not really the paper's fault or your fault.
What mechanism is in place so that the dissemination of information can be exchanged between county commissioner meetings? The information can be disseminated between the county commissioners and the residents, and the residents and the county commissioner?
Well, it's in the papers, as well as on our webpage.
Well, that's not, I'm sorry, that's not sufficient, you know that.
The web page. Can you put on the web page?
What mechanism should be put in place to improve, okay, let's improve that.
If you ask me a question, I'll answer.
Let's improve that.
Okay, we have improved it. All our minutes are broadcast on our webpage, so you can go to our webpage and watch the entire meeting on our webpage and get all the information.
I don't think it's enough of a coordinated effort.
And what about updates? Besides meetings, you need to put stuff on the webpage. What updates? What do you learn? What do you know? What are you doing? Especially about this issue. It should be on the webpage so we can read it.
We just told you everything that we knew, and Mary Ann just told you she doesn't know anything.
She just told us a number of things. I wouldn't say she doesn't know anything. She just told us she talked to Tom Donato, and there was discussion about incinerator, that they want to develop the land, and that the property hasn't closed yet. We are learning something. So you already know something, that means you've got to go quick and do something to protect us, protect the people, which is your job, which is listed as your job title.
Thank you.
Yeah, can Mary Ann let them know about the opposition from the community?
I think she already has.
I did, that was part of my, part of my conversation the first time, because when I talked to them, I said that you would, you would still continue the process of purchasing the property with the major opposition from our residents in the county, and they said absolutely. So.
There you go.
With that said, I just want to recap here. It seems to me that what you're saying is that you have an opportunity to pass a Clean Air Ordinance Act within the county that would encompass all the municipalities within the 50-mile range.
Right.
Okay. So if we were to go to our local meetings and townships and boroughs and cities that we reside in and get them to pass a resolution supporting a Clean Air Act sponsored by the county ordinance on that level, that would in fact protect all of us, correct?
Well, the question becomes as to what the, what the ordinance says, what's legal, what's enforceable, and what you can stand behind. And that's what has to be determined.
And the solicitor's looking into that, right?
I'm asking Mr. Brickle to do that.
He's doing that also. Brickle is looking into that, and he's working on New Milford Township.
I have a question. When you were discussing the water and so forth not being sufficient for new businesses to come in and so forth, I, well, it's my understanding that this incinerator would require a lot of water to, for the process itself, the use of steam.
Okay, again, again. So I'm going to try and deal with facts. We have nothing that tells us if they're even going to use water or use water at the site. So, I mean.
Incinerators usually use that, don't they?
Well, depends, you know, there's many different kinds of incinerators, depending on what their propellant is as far as fuel and what they're doing, you know. Again, we don't know, but the assumption would be that they would need water and there is no water there.
Based on the assumption that they would, besides what they would disperse in the air, what would they do with the toxic water afterwards? And where would they get the water from?
Well, that's why we said, part of that area, when we looked at it, is not conducive because there is no water there. There is no sewers there. There's no creeks to get rid of the stormwater or the sewage.
It really is. So why would they purchase it, then?
Well, I don't know.
They must have consultants, you know they must have consultants. They spend all kinds of big money.
Okay, wait, Vera.
They must, to check out property before you go into contract.
Vera, please stop. You don't get to just start talking to me.
Okay.
You know that. I am sure that if they're going to invest millions of dollars into this property and buying it, that they have all kinds of contingencies in their sales contract that says if they can't get fresh water, if they can't get sewage issues taken care of, if they can't get stormwater issues taken care of, that it's going to give them the ability to get out of the contract and not purchase the land. Now, I've not seen the sales contract, and I'm sure that they will not let me see the sales contract. I'd love to see the sales contract, but again, I'm sure that I would not think that investors that were going to spend, you know, $100 million on a site would go in and put themselves in a position to buy it without being sure that they could get all the stuff in place before they actually bought it.
Okay, thank you.
Has the county been in touch with DEP about the process?
We've been in touch enough to ask if they have had.
In communications.
Right. Been in touch with them enough to find out if there's been anything filed or any applications or anything like that, and the answer was no.
Since if they might need water, could they enforce once they purchase it? Could they enforce the county to make, to pay for the water, you know, for a water system to be put in, like a sewage system?
No, no.
Do you don't think so?
No, absolutely not.
They can't put a sewage plant, other industries put sewage plants in.
No, that's the question she asked me, is if the county could be forced to put in sewage.
Oh, county can't, but they can do it. They can do it.
But again, where are you going to send the runoff?
They can also truck it out. They don't have to just send it into the creek.
Okay, but again, where are you going to run, what are you going to do with all the stormwater?
What does the industry, gas industry, do with all their residual waste? They truck it out? You know how many trucks they use?
No, you're talking about two different things. Stormwater is different than waste.
So then you truck that out, too? Can't you just truck that out?
No, no.
And I'm sure they did enough consultants, that you're not going to go into contract without knowing exactly that you can do it. You're not going to invest in the contract.
Listen, I just told you about the one Gulf did three years ago, and they've got nothing. They've been paying these people money on the houses for the last three years.
They're not being forthcoming with their representatives. They're not telling you very much.
Exactly. Any other comments?
Simply that I think time is of essence, because once it's in, it's hard to fight. When it's, when we have an even playing field with an ordinance that everyone is required to face, a good, solid ordinance that's defensible, as you mentioned, we're in better shape, and as stringent as we can be to protect our people.
So I agree with her, and I want to know, like, maybe how you can help us or tell us, like, if there's any, we could have a timeline or something, since this is of ultimate importance, that you know when one could be formed or?
Well, I don't know. All I can tell you is I'll respond at the next meeting based on information I get back from the solicitors and that information.
And that's two weeks from now? Two weeks that are vital time, vital for this issue. So we need to know on the website what you're doing.
Any other questions or comments?
I just have a comment that on Tyler Corners' website, they do have at the end of their information, a comment section, so we can all put our comments in that Tyler Corners.
I did, I put comments, so this, but we get no response. Mary Ann is the only one I know who got a response. None of us got a response.
That's not what I'm saying, that we're going to get responses. It's not, I don't think it's a give-and-take kind of thing for them. I think if we all go to their website and put our opinion of how we feel about it, the more, the more responses they get, they're not going to like what they see and what they hear.
That's good.
What's the website address?
I believe so.
Is that it?
I just want to.
I'm Frank Pinn, Lakeview Township. Would the officials do it and they can help stop this?
Officials will do what they can legally and what they can according to statute to take and review the situation and do what can be done.
So how many petitions are taken?
That means zero.
If I get the ordinance through the county or townships, a height ordinance?
A height ordinance?
That would.
Well, you've got to remember, as again, as I said, the issue with ordinances, you've got to be careful what you write, because not only will it affect what's coming in, it affects everything that's here, too.
Would you want evidence?
There's no such thing as you can't grandfather people.
Can we put evidence, maybe from water wells, from roads?
Like, is taking the height of the tallest silo or this building here, they got to limit, because these towers, these stacks, they're very.
Well, then they would just engineer a stack that was 10 feet high and put fans in it to blow it out. I mean.
One foot lower than required?
Right. So, you know, they're just, you know, again, that's why I said about ordinances and about regulations, you've got to make sure that they're written so that, you know, when you, when you put that regulation out there, it's going to be effective. And it's like trying to do something too soon. If something comes out too soon and they're doing something totally different than everything we just did, it doesn't work. And then if we try to do something because, now because of that, because it's different than what we anticipated, then they get to say, well, now you're taking and being discriminatory because now you're changing it just to take and focus on us. So, you know, timing is everything, as all of you agree, but doing something too quick is also bad also.
Wait, in general, we ask you that you're all against the incinerator, all three of you?
What's that?
Are all three, are you against the incinerator in general?
My public comment as a commissioner is, my comment as public commissioner is that I'm neutral.
And what about the other two? Mary Ann, are you for the incinerator, against it, or neutral?
I'm going to have to say I'm neutral in speaking to our solicitor and what I have to say publicly.
And you, Betsy, are you neutral for the incinerator, against it?
I'm going to agree with them on the neutral, and we're listening to the people.
Any other comments?
Are you allowed to say you're against it? Or can you sue for them?
There you go, you're learning.
I was talking to the Tyler family, and they just asked me to let everyone know that even though Tyler Corners is named after their family, they have nothing to do with it, and they were just as surprised as everyone else, and they, they didn't want people thinking it had anything to do with them.
All right, can I get a motion, Adrian?
I've got a question. What is our county's solicitor's name?
Michael Jim Breckel.
Okay, thank you.
I also want to ask on another topic, how you're doing with the water line to South Montrose to the jail, since Diaz has no longer an industrial park he's going to do. From what I understand, Diaz pulled out. Is that correct?
That is correct. The water line is still moving forward. We actually have been in contact with Harrisburg. Harrisburg is still funding part of the project, even though that industry is not going there. The site has been made shovel-ready for any business, and my understanding at this point there is ongoing negotiations with the property owner as far as trying to bring other businesses in there.
So right now, there's nothing definite as far as the industrial park? And you're bringing water to that specific property?
We're bringing water specifically to the jail and to a couple of businesses that are on that street.
That are on that street.
And that was the whole focus of this from day one, was to get water to the jail because of the issue we have with water at the jail.
Okay, and I just want to again plead for the Dimick families who are suffering since 2008 with no water. If you can please consider with the impact money, which is impact money from gas drilling, verified by the DEP, that they please get a water line. They've been suffering since 2008. We have a whole group of families. And would you consider that? And we want to, I want to put that out on the table again, to plead for them that they need this with our impact money, which we have millions. What's the, what's the balance in the account right now from the impact money?
Probably about $8 million.
And that's with the new check for this year?
That concludes this year's check.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, I got a motion, Adrian. All three of you? All right, we're all here.
Thank you, it's my first.
Never a person.